May 2020. This evening, we have a really, really heavy agenda, somewhat heavy agenda. So let's start as usual with a pledge of allegiance to our flag, followed by a moment of silent reflection or prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you all, and please be seated. This evening, we'll start with our usual new business. Under item one is for the review and signature of the board cemetery deeds. Motion?
Motion to sign?
I have a motion and a second to sign cemetery deeds, to which there are three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
Okay, well, we'll move on if that's decided. We'll move on to item number two. Viola Babula. Horizon submitting a PEG.
That's the last time you say that before.
Well, you never know. Commending a pick grant report for the first quarter of 2020. Motion to accept, as stated?
So.
Second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept the grant report for the first quarter of 2020. Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the board votes aye, so that is five to zero. Number three, Bon Caldo Inc. doing business as Bon Caldo Restaurant. Bon Caldo, located at 1381 Boston Providence Turnpike, has closed their business. And that happened back in February of this year, roughly four months ago. Therefore, they are failing to provide the public with the services contemplated by their liquor license. We want to set a public hearing to discuss the issue of the license.
Motion to set the hearing?
I have a motion to set up a hearing, and what I'd like to do is have a date determined by the administrative staff here in the selectmen's office, something that's appropriate for all people involved. Mr., I have a motion and a second. Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. So there will be a hearing coming up with a date to be determined. Number two, number four, rather, on our agenda, Giuseppe Tropiano, general manager of Lewis's Restaurant and Grill Inc., located at 86 Central Street, committing application for an alteration of premises. The idea is they'd like to put an outside dining area on their premises. We have to have a.
A hearing?
Motion to set up a public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and that again will be the same as the prior situation, date to be determined by our administrative staff. That brings us to article five on the new agenda, a new business agenda. Russ McGuire Norwood Airport Manager, admitting for the signature of the chairman, MassDOT grant application, a MassDOT assurance for equipment. It's called a MASH Master, handles the vegetation down there, roughly in the area of $193,000, $193,000, which will be a grant to the town of Norwood for that purpose.
Motion for the chairman to sign?
I have a motion, and I have a second. Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so we'll be accepting that those monies to for that purpose at the Norwood Airport. Number six, Thomas J. McQuade, director of planning and, I'm sorry, director of finance and accounting, submitting a request for a reserve fund transfer of $7,575 for tuition at the Norfolk Aggie School. Apparently, there was a place marker put in place for a certain amount of money to pay tuition at Norfolk County Agricultural School, and it came in at a higher number. So the difference being $7,575. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on that. Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so we'll be accepting that. We're signing that document, moving it forward to the Department of Transportation. Number seven, Tony Mazuko, general manager, has A, B, C, and D. A, submitting bad debt list for aged cable and electric accounts and requesting approval to write these bad debts off at this time.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair?
Favor? Mr. Ja?
I think Mr. Howard had a question on the motion, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that, Mr. Howard. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to make, make this information available. I believe any of these accounts that are coming to us as bad debts now have already gone out to collection agencies, and anything that could be done to collect these monies has been done.
That is correct.
Financial policy to write them off, and we can continue on. We always have the opportunity to collect them at any point in time if we so choose, but right now, we're not going to carry them on our books. Basically, what that means.
And they're all from 2012, 2013. That's how long we've been working.
Right, and they have been working diligently at it. A lot of these people have moved out of town. A lot of them may have been apartment dwellers, they've left the area, and they have done everything they can do up to this point in time to recover any monies that are required. Apparently, we have failed to collect what we wanted to collect. It's a very small percentage. Mr. Mazuko, do you remember off the top of your head what the percentage of the total?
You know, it's a few years back. I don't know. We're within sort of industry standards and actually slightly below. We delay the write-off for quite a while because we make every effort for the collection. But to your point, it may be somebody who lived here for three months and then switched cable service, cut their cable service, or left, and we make every effort, and then at some point, the accountants just need you to write it off the, write it off the books.
Mr. Chair, that's the point I wanted to make, was that our people have worked diligently to try to collect these monies. This wasn't just a casual thought to put these on the write-off list.
As far as the cable debt, the uncollectible accounts account for 1% of our overall total. As far as the electric uncollectible accounts, that accounts for 0.17% of our overall total. So although it seems like a large amount of money, in the big picture, it's a very small amount of money. But like I said, if we choose to do so, we can continue on. We just thought, we're not going to carry these on our books at this time. These debts. So I have a motion and a second. Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
Hajar?
Aye.
And the board votes, the chairman, rather, votes in the affirmative to clear these off our debt. Number B, under number seven, submitting an approval, for approval of the board, a plan for rapid rectangular flashing beacon in front of the civic center. We also have Mr. Mark Ryan on board tonight to answer any further questions if need be. Mr. Mazuko?
Chairman, the board has been looking for a while, and we've been looking to deliver a rapid flashing beacon in front of the civic center. You now have the plans in front of you, and we would be happy for the board to go ahead and approve it, and certainly to answer any questions you may have regarding it.
Mr. Plasko?
Well, the thanks to Mr. Howard and Mr. Ryan, I make a motion to approve.
Second?
With thanks as well, I, second.
And I have a motion and a second, and on the motion, I think I can say that I'm very happy to see this happen. I've had occasion over the years to direct traffic at that point during the election periods, and there are a lot of people that just do not choose to pay attention to the roadway, and this is hopefully going to prevent any personal injury to anybody, or young child, or adult crossing that intersection. Do I have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
And the board votes aye. That brings us to, let us see, the number seven, submitting for review and approval of the board, several options of signaling for the intersection of Washington Street at Short Street. So that would be right in the area of Hawes Pool. Mr. Mazuko, would you like to jump in?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board knows, last year at town meeting, we did approve a signalization project at Washington and Short Street. Work going on right there for anyone watching it. And we have a few different design options the board can choose from, and we would ask that you choose the design option you feel most comfortable with, so that we can go ahead and begin this project.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Ryan to step in if he could for one moment and give us his thoughts and possibly a recommendation for the people at home.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and hello, everyone at home, and especially the Board of Selectmen and the manager doing a great job during this crisis. So as Mr. Mazuko said, we, we got funding last year for design and construction of traffic signals on Washington Street at Short Street. These, this intersection was identified during the skating rink design and, and, and process that it presently warrants signals. It meets the warrants put down by the state to install a traffic signal. So we've hired VHB, a traffic consultant, and we have six concepts in front of you. Each one of them has a lot of pros and cons, which we provided you as a guide to, you know, help you make your decision. But in the end, you know, when you look at all the, the options, option 1A is, is the best option in, in the engineering and TPW's estimation, because it, it keeps the parking for the Brookside and Hawes Pool, and its minimal invasiveness to the, to the area. No trees are removed, landscaped area that's maintained by the Norwood Evening Garden Club is maintained. So my recommendation and the TPW and Engineering Department's recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is option 1A.
Comments from the board? Mr. Plasko?
I know I may get the wrath of the Norwood Evening Garden Club, but I like option 1B a lot better. I mean, you have to end up giving up that planting area, but it moves the traffic, parking traffic hole, but you don't actually think you lose any space. But it sets it back so that there's a, a better clearance for the traffic flow, better line of vision as you enter that difficult intersection. We hope this can be improved with the budget, but I think it would be even better with the wider clearer entrance into the, and I'm talking about from north to south, from through South Norwood to Walpole. If you see that, you can see how the parking is set back by that plan.
Mr. Hajar, sir?
Yes, I, I looked at them all too, and I, I actually feel that option 2A is our best alternative. The reason being is, from a safety perspective, it aligns the parking lot with Short Street. And I thought that was one of the ma- major purposes of why we're trying to do that intersection is because of the different crosswalks going from Short Street, crossing over Washington Street. And to me, having that signalization aligned with the parking lot makes it a lot easier for traffic to come out of that parking lot than, than it would having the entrance and exit, you know, 20, 30 feet up, up the street. When you compare the pros and cons, the, the pros on option 2A, it has two additional, which is it increases the number of off-street parking by three spaces. So we gain three spaces, and, and that's good for that area because of the number of families and individuals that use Hawes in general. And as I said, it aligns the town pool driveway with Short Street. The two cons that are different than, than 1A, it removes two trees next to a pool house. I would say, okay, so let's replace them with, if you want four trees somewhere else, but well, we can do that. And then says bring parking lot closer to the pool house. I'm not so sure that that's a, a major reason why not to align it, to do it. So I, I actually like 2A when I look at all of them and look at the list of the cons, 2A seems to make the most sense to me.
Everybody from Mr. Mazuko, Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Chairman, in respect, Selectman Hajar's opinion, in the trees, yes, that they can always be replicated somewhere else. We're talking very expensive, not figured in the budget to redo that parking lot over, and you bring in that parking lot about 18 feet closer to the pool house. So we didn't think that was, you know, in the best interest of the, of the operation down there. And this intersection, the whole idea, you know, it would help people leaving the parking lot for the pool, but basically, it's, it's a safety thing for Short Street. So personally, an ideal situation, yeah, you know, realign the parking lot, rebuild it, you know, but in our opinion, option 1A is the best option. Cost wise, as far as operation for the pool house, and, you know, that's why we went with that recommendation.
Anything from you, Mr. Mazuko?
No, I, I think, you know, almost any option is going to be good. I mean, I would defer to Marcus, the engineer, with 1A. I think if he went with 2B, it would be just as good. We just may need to seek an additional appropriation to cover the cost. And then I believe Mr. Plasko wanted 1B, so at the end of the day, the, we just recommend the board select one option. They're all good options.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
You know, 1B will work as well. I mean, it's not that bad, but a little extra effort, not that insurmountable. So personally, 1A is preferred, but 1A or 1B would be the options we would recommend.
Mr. Plasko, just to jump to you for a moment, and I'll get you in one second, Mr. Maloney. You were looking for 1B? Is there an option?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so we have, we have 1A, 1B, but Mr. Hajar's was.
2A.
2A, correct. Okay, if I could just turn it over to Mr. Maloney, I think he has a question.
Well, just briefly, you know, it's, when I first looked at them, actually, I, I kind of was more enamored of either 2A or 2B as well because of the squaring up of the intersection. But I, I don't, I have to admit, Mr. Ryan makes the point about actually to, to square up the intersection, you have to move the parking lot 18 feet closer to the pool house. That, that, that's probably not a good idea. That area between the parking lot with the fences and the pool house itself is pretty big now, but it is a big gathering area, especially on summer nights when you have the, the swimbeats against other towns. Probably won't be having them this summer, but next summer we will. So there, there is, there are times when that whole area is used and filled with people watching competitions. That doesn't, not take into account the morning, the morning lessons. Finally, regarding the squaring up, as much as I do like the idea, that was my preference, as Mr. Hajar said, I was sort of thinking along the lines too. Frankly, the, the parking lot is really busy at certain times, most of the times it isn't. So for that reason, I think I'd probably go with either 1A or 1B. The two option threes, no one seems to like, and I don't like them either. But I'd favor 1A or B over 2A or B at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I personally would defer to Mr. Ryan's option also for the reasons he has articulated. Again, it's not as close to the pool house, and so on, and so on. And as far as monetary cost, I'm really not concerned about a difference in costs, whether it's more or less. Bottom line here is safety, and it's always going to be safety. Mr. Howard, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. A question for Mr. Ryan. In, in putting the signals there, if you didn't square up the intersection, would, would you have to use, would you have to set up the turn, the signal to, to have one road come in, and then the other road come in, you know, from the parking lot? So. Or they both get green together, do you think? Yes, thank you, Mr. Howard. They will get, they will get green together, but we could certainly look at a, what they call a lead time. So if you're in the parking lot and it becomes green, they would get like a six-second head start. We could certainly look at that if you like. No, I, I wasn't trying to do that. What I was, what I was just worried about was that it, that if they weren't lined up and one side got the green, then the other side got the green, it'd just take more time sitting there for all four sides. That, that was my only concern. But if they get the green at the same time, it's all good. They, they, the plan right now is green at the same time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome, Mr. Howard. Anything else from the board members? With that said, Mr. Plasko, I'm sorry.
I, I just, if you want to move it along and see if motions pass or fail, I'd make a motion to support option 1B.
There was a motion to support motion 1B against the recommendation of Mr. Ryan. Do I have a second? Mr. Hajar is the second. So we have a motion. I'm not, you have a question?
I had, had a question, you forgot a second, but if there's no second, I'm all, I'm all straight.
Okay, there appears to be no second unless I'm mistaken. So with that, motion fails. Do I have a secondary motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Howard?
Make a motion for 1A, Mr. Chairman?
Do I have a second on 1A, which is Mr. Ryan, a town engineer's recommendation?
I'll second it.
I have a second. We have a motion and a second, so everybody's perfectly clear to accept number option 1A, which is the town engineer's recommendation for multitudine reasons that he's already articulated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous, Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
And the board votes, the chair, rather, votes aye, so the option will be, the way everybody's clear, option 1A, which was the original recommendation from the town engineer. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, for your input.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night, sir.
Good night, Mr. Ryan, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, the last thing of the manager's rotations here, under D, is a reserve fund transfer, and I'll read this if I could. Request from the fire department for reserve fund transfer in the amount of $26,343. Apparently, that's to rebuild the engine block on engine four. There's a lengthy dissertation here about failure of the oil cooler and debris ingestion, and so on, and so on, and so on. So it became necessary to rebuild the entire block on the engine, engine number four. So let's do that one separately. Do I have a motion to accept that recommendation for the reserve fund transfer? Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question. How old is this unit? Can we have a little, little detail on it?
The unit's aging, I think engine four is around the 10 or 12-year mark. It's not at its life expectancy, but it's a large commercial unit that's aging. One of the challenges we have with the larger engines is you very rarely get the $200 or $300 fixes.
How long would you guess that, that we would have this engine for?
Oh, at least another five years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Let me just read the recommendation from Chief Maurice. Engine coolant was found mixed in with the engine oil, showing failure of engine oil cooler, number one. They replaced the engine cooler. Also after performing a turbo repair, evidence of debris ingestion was found in compromised air filter housing. And lastly, the pistons were pulled and the engine was found to be dusted. Great tell, whatever that means. Engine short block, and an entire block rebuild was performed. If one thing happened after another, and I think it's probably cheaper to fix that, keep it five years than to even think about buying another one.
Right.
Any other questions from the board on that? Motion?
Motion to approve?
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous, Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that has passed five to nothing. That brings us up to the last item on Mr. Mazuko's request. Police Department looking for reserve fund transfer in the amount of $10,656 to upgrade radio equipment. Let me just explain that so everybody understands what's going on here. When the police radios, I'm talking about the, what you were destroyed to as a walkie-talkie or portable, the radios were digital capable, but they were not digital ready at the total different frequencies like AM and FM. This would mean that a device would have to be installed into the radio to transmit, receive digital transmissions. Unfortunately, the town of Walpole has gone digital, leaving us and other area communities unable to communicate with that agency that we rely on, as they do perform mutual aid, and they are the surrounding town. And I know just recently, we had an armed robbery here at Raritan Avenue, Washington Street, that involved communication with the Walpole Police Department. So it's difficult to best, and for the price of $10,000, we can get back our communication system to the point we need to. Any questions from the board? I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second?
I have a motion to approve and a second. Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the board votes aye, so that has been accomplished. The next one up is number eight, small cell telecommunications facilities, proposed regulations, and I had promised Mr. Hajar several weeks ago, tonight, we would have a discussion. So I'm just asking, before we have that discussion, Mr. Hajar, that we ask Mr. Mazuko to explain to the people at home exactly what we are talking about when we use the word "small cell telecommunications."
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am going to, I have just a couple of brief slides to bring everyone up to speed on where we are and what we're looking at. While I get that ready, I did just pull up the capital plan. Engine four is a, it's 2010, so it's 10 years old, scheduled for tentative replacement in the FY '24 budget. We, of course, it's about a year, 18 months or longer before we get it, so we're, are at that five-year timeline roughly. As the board knows, we've been looking at. As the board knows, we've been looking at small cell pole attachments for a little while now. Small cell pole attachments refer to physical attachments, think a box, for provision of additional wireless coverage on existing and possibly new utility poles throughout the community. Under FCC, that's the Federal Communications Commission guidelines, it cannot be reasonably denied. So we simply can't say we don't want any of these pole attachments. Regulations can be adopted for reasonable measures, distances from homes. There's some fees in permitting, uh, costs and an application process. There's not a huge amount between the pole revenue and the, uh, permits in revenue, but there's a few dollars there. And we do have actually two separate sets of regulations that we have to operate under. The light department as a utility provider has to have regulations for the utility provider and their role as a utility provider. And the town, as the local government and the permitting authority, also has to have regulations. And they are actually separate documents. I know it sounds like there's a lot of overlap, but if we did not have a municipal electric company, whoever our electric provider would be, National Grid, NSAR, would have their own regulations and then we would have our permitting regulations. So we do keep two sets on the books. Just in case anyone at home is wondering what the, uh, what they look like or what they can look like, if you'll ignore my, uh, small typo there. So you'll notice something up the top of this sign here, a pole here in the bottom. Here on the right, uh, it's obviously in sunny Florida or somewhere, so somewhere where the weather's a little bit warmer. They're not that obtrusive and they're more modern, uh, iterations. Sometimes they can be a little bit less slightly like these ones. But those are just examples of what we'd be looking at. You'd like, more likely see what you see in these two, uh, photos here. So if the board remembers in December, we actually approved the light department regulations, uh, in your capacity as light commissioners. And again, those are our utility regulations as the utility service. And we are a pole owner as well as a joint pole owner, most communities are not. The town regulations are under review, we have had some comments from the board. To, what we'd like to do is to have town council and staff review and prepare a final version for the board to discuss and approve in a couple of weeks' time, depending on the schedule. If you so choose, and we would certainly recommend this, you can assign one member to work with the manager to finalize a recommended version for the board to vote on. And that final version may go through a consultant review once we have the town council and, uh, has finalized their review. And we'd also like to make sure it runs through a quick staff review, engineering, planning, public safety. And then we can get the board a final, this is our recommendation. If there's separate engineering recommendations from that, we would of course go along with those, but then the board can at least, uh, pass that and be set with it. So in brief, Mr. Chairman, that is where we are and we'd recommend the board taking that action and we can get a finalized document, uh, probably even possibly before you and Mr. Howard are off the board. May necessitate a special meeting for that.
First off, I would like to, uh, thank Mr. Hajar for all the intensive work he's done on this, number one, and ask him if he would work with you to, uh, come to a conclusion for this, uh, topic. Mr. Hajar, is that okay with you?
That's okay with me, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other comments from the board? I think, uh, Mr. Plasko?
All right, a question or two, if I might?
Absolutely.
We had a version that we got some time ago, attorney, uh, presented it to us. We were going to read it, offering comments if we had them and hopefully vote two weeks later. Somehow it got lost, we never did that. Now we have a version with some, uh, changes, but it also recommends, which I didn't hear the manager, uh, comment on just then, uh, hiring a consultant. It seems like it's practically done. We have two sets of attorneys, we have, uh, our staff. I, I don't really quite understand why we would need a consultant. And I want to understand whether, before I support, whether the motion is in anticipating the hiring of a consultant.
My, my understanding is what we would first do is bring the board a document that the staff completed a review and commentary on, and town council has approved. At that point, if you would like to select a, uh, engineering firm to do a further review, you'd have the decision at that point to do so.
Why would we have an engineering firm review it?
It, it's technical material, it's not a, oh, it's, there's certainly nothing wrong with having a technical firm or a telecom firm, uh, do a final review of them. You may determine it's not necessary. Uh, we would let you make that decision, or our recommendation would be that you make that decision after you've gone through the staff review and town council has reviewed it. You may feel that there's no further need, or you may decide that having one more set of eyes is not a, uh, bad idea. That's separate from having consultants review applications as they come in. That will be a separate process and what's standard in the industry is to have a peer review process of an application by an outside consulting firm.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Hajar, do you have any words?
Uh, no. No, I think the, the Tony outlined it correctly in, uh, the, the purpose of submitting the latest drafts and just so you could see where we are today, um, that we don't have that much longer to go, um. And there are fees involved and there are timelines that we have to deal with. So, uh, that is the reason why we need to get this done sooner rather than later, so.
And I think it's important that the people at home also understand that this is nothing that anybody is going to stop. This is the future, it's going to happen, it's going to take place. We, as the board of selectmen, just want to make sure it's done appropriately and in the proper fashion. So the recommendation is to have Mr. Hajar and Mr. Mazuko work together with the existing documents that we have from Mr. Hajar. Anything further that may be added, with the input from council and so on and so on, as we articulated. Is anybody in favor of that? And if so, can I get a motion? I'm sorry, Mr. Maloney, you have a question?
Well, just, just one question, I suppose the important things for the rest of us would be to know what the variables are. So it looks like the variables have to do with what fees are going to be charged or fines and distance between installations and so forth. Do we, do we have the right to tell them where they, where any vendor can or cannot, what section of town they can or cannot install these things? Uh, so I guess some, the big thing, letting us know what the variables are. And apart from that, the two documents I have here seem to be pretty, pretty close.
What we can do when we bring you the final version is a clarified list if there's, so let's say if there's a fee in there that we say is a hundred dollars and that's something we have some control over, we can bring you and say, look, this is one of the variables, we recommend a hundred dollars. You can go down to 50, up to 150. Um, you know, there's distance from the homes, we'll say, look, this is our recommendation, you could try to go more, you could try to go less. You can't have your, uh, regulations be so prescriptive that you're keeping them out of town. But on the other hand, if there's a few decision points that we just picked a number, that's sort of an industry standard, but you could go more above or below, we'll make sure to bring you those on a nice clean sheet of paper so you can see here's really the, the four or five decision points.
That's, that actually answers my second question. So it is possible to be too prescriptive here, you know, to, 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 to be sort of slyly discouraging anyone from coming into the town and, uh, we would probably face a legal challenge in that case, uh, if, if we were in that regard. Is that fair to say?
Absolutely. The, the FCC has ruled that these are allowed, they're able to go in, we can have some reasonable, uh, measures put in place, but if we were to try to craft regulations in a way to say, well, it needs to be 2,000 feet from any home and 3,000 feet from a body of water, and it needs to be X, B, you know, X, Y, and Z, in a way to kind of make sure that they couldn't come into town, it would quickly get figured out and we'd be in front of the FCC, we'd be in court and we'd lose that. Um, one item we do want to look at is whether we can require, and I believe other towns have a certificate, uh, or ask the applicant to just certify that there are no ill health effects from these and, uh, to indemnify us if they are. Uh, we've seen a few other towns and they haven't come in. I think that's very reasonable and if we were to go to court, it would be challenged on that. We're simply saying, before you even solve something in our community, just sign a letter saying that you guarantee it's not going to harm anyone.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Howard, you had a question, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Mazuko, I, I couldn't myself stress it more that we need that, the assurance that it's not going to affect our people. But the thought I had was, is this, I'm talking about here, uh, is this like one of the cell phone companies at least advertisers on TV that they suppose have across the whole country already?
Yeah, so it, it's part of a couple of things. It, it's the rollout of wireless throughout the country. And what the telecom, uh, companies are doing is they're building the infrastructure for the internet of things. As you know, everything is more connected than it used to be. Some of us have many internet connected devices in our homes. And as cars become more connected and you have more driverless vehicles and automated delivery systems, you're going to see a need for more wireless and more connection in between devices. And they're just looking to build out that infrastructure on top of what's exactly what's already there. There may be a desire among the wireless companies in the future to look if they can offer a service from their poles to the home without doing a fiber optic cable. Whether that'll come is, is a, uh, question for the futurists and not for us. But it's a build out that's going on throughout the country, much like when, uh, cable came in, when internet came in and you can't really prevent these telecommunications services from coming in because the all powerful FCC has so ruled. But it is happening everywhere in the country. We'd like to have, uh, reasonable regulations to protect us to the greatest extent we can. But at the end of the day, the FCC controls the airwaves and in this case, the pole waves are our ability. We, we are lucky that we have a little bit more control than the average community because we own and co-own a lot of our poles. But at the end of the day, the FCC has said they're allowed to be here.
Is, is the, are these connections going to be for each cable company?
You could face multiple applications from different, um, vendors. There is somewhat of a limit as to where they want their coverage territory to be. And each pole only has a physical, uh, physical limitation for where each, uh, how many you could fit. But in theory, you could have three companies on one pole.
No, so in the end, we could have a lot of this equipment around our town.
It is highly possible, and that's every community in the country.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Manager.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Hajar, with your background in telecommunications industry, can you give us a little closing synopsis of what all this means for the town?
Well, um, you, you do need a tight set of regulations, the best that we can make them. I, I think we're on our way there. I, I did want to just answer, uh, Tom's first question was, can we sort of say where can we have them located, you know, residential, commercial? And we can indicate our preference, which we have done in this draft, where, you know, industrial zone is first, commercial zone is second, uh, mixed commercial and residential third, and residential is last. So we're trying to tell them where they can go. And I think the distances are, one of the important factors that we need to have clearly defined in here, tells them how far they can have one, you know, 5G service and their next one. So do we want them to be 250 feet apart versus 500? That's something like a consultant can help us, one that has dealt with municipalities across the country. And they, they can tell us where the FCC is going versus just dealing with the town of no. We want to see that what we're proposing, if it's, if others have done it and failed, we don't want to make the same mistake. Or if we have something that's too loose, they may be able to say, hey, no, this is what the FCC has accepted. In other states, you should put it in yours. And Tony's point about the, um, the radio frequency harm, harmfulness is, is very important. So that would definitely be in, included. But there are some things that we need to tighten up or get clarified before we put it in front of everybody for a vote.
And could I ask also, um, residential and commercial? You'll see something on telephone poles in the future, if this all passes and goes through, the residential areas. But in commercial areas, away from the, the, the major roadways and so on and so on, you're apt to see just a monopole with several devices on top, is that feasible also? Something different than what you'd see in residential?
Yeah. Absolutely.
I agree with that. Okay, uh.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Just popped into my head, Mr. Hajar, is it, uh, is it at all possible that, uh, private entities will sell airspace for this kind of installation as opposed to put them on our utility poles? Is that done?
Well, well, what, there's a wholesale side and there's a retail, retail side. So I'll just tell you Verizon, so they could have information either in the central office or in polls. And they will sell it to, you know, name another, you know, a third party that can't afford to erect all these cell phone towers. So they will do it and then they'll lease it out and allow other companies to utilize it. And they pay a wholesale price for that.
Okay, thank you. Do you need a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, did you want a motion?
I would love a motion, please, sir.
All right, a motion to do whatever we just agreed to do.
That's a little too cut and dry. Uh, the motion was to, uh, put Mr. Hajar and Mr. Mazuko in the same room together to work out the final details that need to be worked out along with, uh, any other paperwork that has to be completed. So we can hold forward a project. Do I have a motion and a second by Mr. Howard? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that will move along. That brings us up to a discussion of nine and 10. Number nine would be Paul Halakiotis, who is with us this evening, virtually, Director of Planning and Economic Development. And number 10 is a, basically a similar discussion on Central Street dining. I'd like to merge the two of them together if I could. So, uh, Mr. Halakiotis, would you tell us what you have in mind for outdoor regulations to dining?
Good evening, it's good to see all of you. Uh, two minutes ago, the general manager, uh, brought together a group of department heads and, um, tasked me with taking a look at our outdoor dining regulations in anticipation of what we now know will be phase two or three, uh, of, uh, an opening of our local restaurants. And, um, we anticipate that once those restaurants can open because of social distancing requirements, that not every seat in the restaurant can be occupied, um, going forward. So we understand that when they do open, they will be opening at, um, something less of 100% capacity of what they're permitted for seating and that there'll be, um, tables and chairs more sparsely arranged within those restaurants. This means that, um, those restaurants that have already, um, suffered economic harm from being closed for the last six or eight weeks, um, will realize less revenue once they can reopen. In anticipation of this, Tony wanted to, um, try to, to have us take a look at providing more space for those restaurants to operate, to be able to open up the doors and to be able to provide, um, seats and tables and umbrellas, perhaps outside on the sidewalk, in the downtown area and other areas of town where there's more space, like the restaurants on Route 1, that they would be able to, um, maybe set up in a parking lot or in a lawn area on their property. And so he asked us to take a look at our dining regulations, to streamline those regulations and to try to make an easier process for, um, those restaurants to be able to get permitted for outdoor seating. Fortunately, we did have a set of regulations that were put into place years ago. And I was able to, um, uh, work with those and to try to reduce some of the, the red tape and the bureaucracy and to kind of, um, try to create, um, a more business friendly, uh, streamlined permitting process. So I, I worked with, uh, the, uh, health department, the building department, the DPW, police safety officer, the fire department, um, and the planning staff. And I redrafted those regulations, sent them out for all of those departments to take a look at, receive feedback from them and made, uh, adjustments to them. What we're hoping is that, um, we will be ready, when, once, um, the governor opens up restaurants, uh, that we would have regulations in place so that our, our restaurants wouldn't have to wait for us to, to come up with, to do what we're doing now, but we would be ready to, to be able to permit them. Under the revised regulations, instead of the board of selectmen being the permitting authority for outdoor seating, um, it would shift that authority temporarily to the general manager. I want to make clear that the way I, I, these regulations and the way I anticipate this will work is, these are our temporary regulations to address the current situation that we're trying to work through now. Uh, there'd be a, a review process. The health department would be, um, the ones that coordinate that process and a sign off sheet that would, uh, take the input of the various departments that might need to review these applications. If we allow, uh, restaurants to open their doors and set up tables and chairs in the downtown area on the sidewalk, then, uh, there won't be any space for pedestrians to walk. And so working with the DPW and the engineering department, um, they've crafted some plans and I think I, I sent a copy of, uh, conceptual design to the selectmen to review. And what we're thinking about, and you know, this isn't set yet, but we're going to try to, uh, put just some, uh, a little more attractive jersey barriers than the standard concrete model. Um, perhaps some plastic ones that, that look a little nicer. And those would be placed in the, uh, parking lane immediately adjacent to the curb. And those would be, provide, um, an accessway for pedestrians that's, you know, four or five feet wide. According to, uh, Mark Ryan, we do have sufficient space um, on both sides of Washington Street in the downtown area to do this. Um, one way this could pan out is, um, some, a series of bump outs in front of restaurants that do want to offer the outdoor seating. The other approach would be to just uniformly set those jersey barriers, um, within, uh, the edge of, of the parking spaces. And there is sufficient space for two-way traffic and to accommodate pedestrian traffic and you don't, and have, um, any businesses. And it, it may not be just restaurants. Um, it could be, um, um, other retail establishments that might want to have sidewalk sales and set up their wares out on the sidewalk. There may be people that are, are fearful or reluctant to go inside these stores. And it would be nice if people could be able to shop outside as well. So the way the regulations were written, it does try to be flexible to cover the downtown area and, um, restaurants that have bigger properties like the Chateau, um, on Route One. So we're hopeful that, um, the selectmen will consider approving these. It's important to note that the regulations do not change anything regarding, um, the sale of alcohol. And the regulations specifically say that at this point in time, the selectmen would have to, um, determine on a case-by-case basis if they would allow alcohol, um, out, uh, outside of, uh, the building. I'd be glad to, uh, to answer any questions that you have on the draft regulations.
All right, if I could just interject and mention one thing to my colleagues, if they have occasion here to look at the temporary outdoor dining rules and regulations created on May 14th, Article One, Section One. Uh, in the second paragraph, it says, "The applications will be reviewed by town staff and will be approved by the general manager." Mr. Mazuko and I talked about this earlier this afternoon. Uh, in the past, anything as far as outside dining, uh, passed through the Board of Selectmen's Office. Uh, because there is possibly a time constraint here, because we are going into summer months, it could be a two-week delay from the time somebody makes a request until the time the board meets. So with that said, uh, we've, the verbiage I'm about to say is not exactly correct, but you'll get the gist and it will be changed hopefully by Mr. Mazuko. Uh, "Applications will be reviewed by town staff and approved by the general manager with final approval of the chairman of the Board of Selectmen." Rather than go around and try to get five people to agree to something, uh, we could have delegate the chairman, who obviously will not be me, to, uh, to move forward on this prob, project and, uh, with notification to all board members. How does my board feel about that?
Sounds good to me.
Mr. Plasko, you look very pensive.
I have a lot of questions and, uh, points to make on this presentation.
Okay, but how do you feel about this particular thing? Uh, that way it keeps authority back in our domain.
It's fine by me.
Okay, uh, I'd like to make a motion to that effect. If I could get a second and Mr. Mazuko will amend the proper verbiage. Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, I have a motion and a second. Any, any other further questions before we go, Mr. Hajar?
Yeah. Yes, uh, before we vote on that, I, I wanted to hear what Bill had to say because they may be pertinent to is not just, are we voting on the regulations in total or just that paragraph, Mr. Chairman?
Just, just that verbiage, uh, to include Board of, Board of Selectmen approval at some point in time during the process. Other than that, we're going to move on to, uh, the discussion of what, more detailed items. So I have a motion and a second to include the Board of Selectmen in that, uh, temporary outdoor regulations under section, right? Article One, Section One. What's that, Mr. Maloney?
You, you, you want to, you're adding of the chairman of the board, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
With the approval from the Board of Selectmen. We have a motion? I have a motion? Do we have a question, Howard?
Question. Uh, i- i- is, are we proposing this for South Norwood as well?
It's anywhere. I- i- there are general regulations that i- if there was, a- as Mr. Halakiotis said, it could apply to a coffee shop on Washington Street. It could apply anywhere in South Norwood. It could apply to a restaurant on Route One.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the first time you mentioned it, you said the final approval by the chairman of the board. Now, a moment ago, Mr. Maloney, you said approval of the board.
Well, I would pass it, whoever the chairman would be, I think it would be remiss if he did not pass it by all members before a final decision was made. And we could, uh, have the chairman sign off on it. Mr. Mazuko?
I believe what, what Mr., um, what the chairman is trying to get across is we would, we want this process to be able to move quickly. So if a restaurant gets us an application on Monday, on Wednesday, we can get it approved. Since licenses are traditionally issued through the selectmen's office, you would be approving a policy by which, or, or the practice by which the staff have reviewed them. So it's gone through public safety, engineering, health, planning and economic development and building safety. They've all approved it. And then the manager does the final sign-off and then the chair, somewhat as a fait accompli, is signing off on it without it going on the next board agenda. Otherwise, we would be delaying these approvals just according to the board's schedule. Alcohol applications still need to come separately. This does not give anyone the authority or the ability to separate, sell alcohol. It still maintains the selectmen is the office issuing the license. We just wanted to go through that quicker review process of the safety agency, the engineering department, and then the chair is the one signing off on it.
So does everyone understand that now? So I have a motion and a second for that purpose. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Mr. Plasko, moving on further, you had other questions about details?
Yes, thank you. Um, maybe some are comments. I, you know, was very involved with downtown redevelopment, spending funds granted, we went to update the downtown, getting liquor licenses and line light, trying to crack restaurants. So I find it difficult being on this side, a little uh, negative on this proposal, but I think maybe it goes too far and with too many questions. At least I have, when you go through the first page that you mentioned, the same paragraph you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, at the top of the page, it's talking about temporary as if we're trying to do something to help the businesses reopen as Mr. Alkeos has mentioned. But in that paragraph, it says reapplied for annually. I don't know how we're going to annual reapplications and everything, if this is a temporary measure.
So that, Kim, do you want me to address that first point or do we want to wait till Mr. Plasko goes through his points?
I'd rather let him go through his dissertation than we can address. Mr. Plasko, continue, please.
The, uh, other point I wanted to make was anything to do with outs, outside uh, drinking, uh, delivery of alcohol right now is controlled by the ABCC. Uh, so that we'd have to be very careful about any thought of, uh, doing that. Look at these plans. There's a significant loss of parking spaces if they all happen a- as they're drawn, uh, by the engineering department. And I'm concerned that while we think we're helping the restaurants by increasing the seating, that would take away the parking they will need for those customers and the parking for everybody else who's a tenant downtown and trying to operate. And, uh, you know, we don't have enough parking now on a good day. And I know we say while we're reopening, uh, business, there is not that much business, but we're doing things to encourage business. So they're going to need parking. And I think this becomes too dressable, too many spaces. The other thing is that some of these locations, like in front of Lewis's, uh, intersection there, when you come down in front of, uh, two Bay Road and Cedar Market, that's a significant slope. I don't know how anybody's going to be setting up tables or anything there and eating comfortably. In front of Lewis's, it's not quite as bad. But when you show building out a sidewalk, that's a very narrow intersection now. If you try to go through there during the day when deliveries are being made to Lewis's, you can hardly get through. So, um, I don't know that that's a great idea in that area. The other thing is we're talking about a lot of uh, so-called temporary sidewalks being installed by the DPW. Significant time and effort to do that, but also cost. Where's the cost coming from? Where's the money in the budget? How are we handling this? Those are some of the concerns.
Mr. Mazuko, before you begin, let me just, uh, clarify one thing. And I understand your problem with the alcohol being served outside and I agree with, uh, we may have to reach out to the ABCC. But under Article 20 of the town bylaws covering alcoholic beverages under Chapter 138, uh, it stipulates at the end of the first paragraph, it talks about people, "No people shall drink any alcoholic beverage as aforesaid in, on or upon any private land or place without the consent of the owner or person in control of such public or private land or place." So to me, there's a possibility here that we may be able to waive something. But again, I wouldn't want to do that until we did pass some, something through the ABCC.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I very well aware of that bylaw and that provision. That's not what it's talking about at all. I personally don't have a problem with possibly expanding alcohol. But when we do it, at least as of today, the ABCC has very specific regulations. So we have to have public hearings. We have to make sure uh, a business could comply with those unless the ABC lightens, uh, loosens their restrictions. That was my point. Uh, I'm very aware that if we want to, we can allow it. It's just can we meet those regulations? And also do we want to? Because again, as the regulations exist today, they may have to put up some fencing or other barriers to keep people from going through that could further obstruct, uh, access by the public. So I just think we have to be very careful is my only reason for making that point.
No, I do not disagree with any of that. Uh, Mr. Mazuko, do you want to follow up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. To a couple of, uh, Mr. Plasko's points, the one year was thrown in to put a timeline in there. The reason being that, I mean, first of all, we know this is probably not going to apply in January. I suppose if people want to eat outside on the sidewalk in January or February in Norwood, um, maybe I wouldn't say no to it, but we know that's not going to happen. There are interim guidelines until such time as the board decides to revoke said interim guidelines because let's be honest, we don't know how long our current pandemic is going to last. Uh, we would assume these would reasonably be all wrapped up by sometime in October as the weather starts to get colder. We could find ourselves in this situation next summer. It's entirely possible. So we put the year in that if for some reason, uh, we're still in the same situation and we're still in phase two or phase three, that we just threw a date in there. We could just as well change that date to 180 days. We could change it to 90 days. We're proposing them as interim guidelines until such a time as the board decides to remove them or edit them because honestly, we just don't know. This could be an annual process if we're every summer in, uh, some sort of a phase two or phase three lockdown. We don't believe that's going to be the case, but we just simply can't tell you uh, what the phase will be. It is hypothetically possible that things could be back to the new normal as early as the first week of August. I don't necessarily think that's going to happen, but with the plan the governor's laid out, by August 15th, everything could be open just like it was before. Don't want to bet in, I don't want to bet, uh, bank on that, but that's hypothetically possible. In terms of the alcohol service, I had said earlier, this would not be for anyone serving alcohol. That requires a separate process. The board has to have a hearing and notify a butters. We do believe we've identified a legal means by which we can do that. We can be compliant with the town by law. We can be compliant to make sure we have the statutory police authority and allow that extension of premises. However, that's a more complicated and timely process. We can still do it in a reasonable fashion, but that requires a separate application. The board has to hold a public hearing. That process we cannot waive because that's based in, uh, state law and ABCC regulations. There are a number of communities approaching the ABCC, looking at whether the governor will issue either an emergency proclamation or some statutory change allowing us to speed up that process, which would be great because what we're trying to do here is cut red, cut red tape when we can and cut out some bureaucracy where we can to try to give our businesses every tool that we can to help them get up and running. Now, it's Mr. Plasko's points. They're well taken about the potential loss of parking, about the slope of some of these areas. We're not forcing businesses to do this. We're not going to Lewis's or to Bay Road or to the OCC and saying you must give up your parking and have some available, uh, space for outdoor dining. We're simply offering it as an option. We could see 50 restaurants take us up on this. We could see no restaurants take us up on it, but we feel it's something we can do our public health mission to make things safer, to feel people comfortable, particularly we want to focus on downtown. But it is up to a business to submit that application and still want to do it. They may ultimately look at it and say, you know what? For my type of business, having the spaces in front of me is more valuable than it is having the outdoor dining available. Just as I know some restaurants that we've spoken to have said that they would like to have table service outside. Uh, a few restaurants I've spoken to said they would love to put tables outside. They don't intend to have staff, uh, serving on those tables, but they would be for primarily takeout customers. So a breakfast restaurant may hand somebody their sandwich. They want to go outside and just sit somewhere and have the sandwich. So we're giving the option as we want to try to safely reopen and, and sort of have some resurgence in the economy and trying to reduce the overall, uh, amount of time it would take to get them up and running with a project like this. We do believe within the context of the DPW budget and some funds we have available, we can purchase the required uh, jersey barriers and other barriers that we need. There does come at a cost, but we feel that it's uh, justifiable and we'll be able to, uh, make amends, uh, or, or make it work. So we can try to help out some of our businesses. Our ability to purchase, uh, things like cables and outdoor seating for individual restaurants, that would be very limited. Those end up coming at a higher cost. We are separately going to discuss something we're looking at doing on Central Street as well, where we would be providing some communal space. Uh, so we may be able to, we may be able to find grants. There may be businesses that are willing to donate. Uh, that might be something, but the cost of the DPW related items, we believe we can absorb and we can take care of to help get this project up and running.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Halakiotis, I know you had a question, but if you can just wait one second. I want to let everyone know that Sagal Rees, our Director of Public Health is with us this evening and I'd like to give her an opportunity at any point in time, whether it be now or later on, to, uh, jump in and give her thoughts on this.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just here if the board has any questions. Um, I would say there's a lot of science behind, um, less risk of exposure when you're outdoors versus in an enclosed area. So that was a lot of the, the public health reasoning behind this.
We also have a recommendation or a support letter from the, uh, Friends of Nod Center. Charlotte Walsh, uh, President in support of this project also. Uh, Mr. Halakiotis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I understand the concerns that, um, Selectman Plasko has raised regarding parking. Um, I will point out or remind some of you that, um, there are over 800 public parking spaces in the downtown. When we had this conversation with, um, with Charlotte and, and Tom O'Rourke from the Chamber of Commerce about what we were up to, and we talked about this being a trade-off, that um, the businesses would be trading off onsite, uh, right in front of their business, uh, parking spaces in exchange for having the opportunity to seat more customers and do more business. If those restaurants are only allowed to open at 25 or 30% of their normal capacity, therefore, oh, they'll only need 25 or 30% of the parking spaces that they normally would have needed uh, for their customers. And, and in that discussion, we said, well, you know, maybe some people are going to have to park at some of the municipal lots and walk five minutes to a restaurant. That's not so bad. Particularly if we're trying to, to reach out to our favorite restaurants in the town and give them some relief. Let's not forget the, the, the terms of the economic downfall. They're describing this as, as the worst downfall since the Great Depression. And I think it's important for local government to be responsive and sensitive to the needs of our businesses to try to help them get back up. Um, I'd be glad to, to work with Selectman Plasko to address any of, of his concerns and try to modify these regulations. But I think what we've got here is something that's reasonable. It's workable. Each application will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis by, um, by the DPW and the Building Department. If, if, uh, a business wants to have an outdoor heater or something, that'll be reviewed by the Fire Department. And we're confident that, that the town's professional staff will be able to review these applications and make sure that the businesses can operate in, in a safe manner.
Thank you, sir. And I, I, if you can, I'll just hold on one second, Mr. Plasko. I was going to go to you. Um, as the Executive Board of the Town of Nod, I think we have an obligation to do everything we can to prevent some of these businesses from going out of business on a permanent basis. It has been said in the television media that the prediction is that one in four restaurants will fail somewhere in the Commonwealth. And we don't want that to happen here in Nod. And I think, um, there's a lot to be worked out here and I think, uh, Mr. Plasko will have some issues in a minute. But I think we have every obligation to do everything we can to keep these, uh, restaurants and, uh, so on afloat. So with that said, Mr. Plasko, you got a question?
Thank you. Um, a- and I agree with what you said. Like I said, when I first ran for the board in 2000, one of my issues was downtown revitalization. It's close to my heart. But I think as well-meaning as this-
It's close to my heart, but I think as well meaning as this is, it misses the mark. But we lose the parking spaces, as we mentioned, one of the biggest things. The other thing is when we look at these plans, they're putting to make tables available, they're putting tables and chairs on the brick area areas. When we did the downtown T word uh, work, those pavers, the sidewalk is higher than the curb. And they're meant to be a transition. So they're almost in every location, they are sloped. You're not going to put tables and chairs and people sit there. They, if you take just one example, you go up to the first drawing here that they gave us. Morgen Moffin, empty space, Tyboo. And empty space. There's three, there's two restaurants there. We currently encourage outside dining. We allow outside dining and we're trying to keep public distancing and everything for safety. They could probably only put one space each in front of their stores. Well, this drawing, all we get on the sidewalk is three, so one extra space. On the other area, there's six uh, extra tables for seating. But they're over there prick area, which I don't believe is the least bit practical. And what, how are we going to handle if Muggen Muffin wants to do this and Tyboo Cuisine doesn't want to do this? And they're in the same block right next to each other. And yet you're talking about closing off uh, the sidewalk, closing off, losing parking. Uh, I, I, I just think it's well intended. In some areas, it could work, but in our downtown, as shown here, I think it's overkill and not uh, for the effort. Thank you.
Paul, your mute, mic's muted.
I do that because I get tired of hearing myself talk. Uh, just like I said earlier, we have an obligation to do what we can do. But with that said, I'm going to ask Mr. Plasko if he'd be willing to sit down with Mr. Halak Yodis and the General Manager to find some alternative, something that would keep this somewhat viable going forward. If we can help one or two restaurants, I think we've made a difference. Uh, a lot of the stuff may be a little aggressive and overkill. I know one restaurant owner in particular, all he's looking for is a couple of small tables in front of his establishment. So people can buy the food on a takeout base and sit outside and eat it. Uh, and he doesn't see a particular need for closing up uh, most of the thoroughfare and uh, walkway and roadways and everything else. So with that said, Mr. Plasko, would you be amenable to that? You better come up with something else that works?
I'm always amenable to sitting down and trying to work with people and get things to work. But if this passes now, is there any need for that? I mean, I, so far I've spoken an eye of uh, concerns. I don't know that anyone else agrees.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am sympathetic to the gall here. Uh, a couple of things though, Mr. Plasko made one point early on, and I think that might, that is germane, really important. Um, which has to do with Central Street around the corner as you, as you turn from Cottage on the Central where uh, uh, Lewis's has their delivery trucks come in usually in the morning and they take up half the road just there without any additional sidewalk space. That could be a real problem. I mean, let's they make an adjustment that would help us out if we're giving them some space perhaps they could, they could give on the other side. But um, what it might come down to, and I do have one question about the regulations, it might just come down to this. Perhaps we just allow restaurants where they want to, to put tables and chairs out on the sidewalk. It just, and just leave it at that rather than creating new sidewalks and and buying, purchasing or leasing jersey barriers. Try to make it simple. If honest to God, the demand is that great, perhaps we can expand it. But that'll at least um, it'll give them something uh, that, that meets Sagal's concerns or addresses her uh, um, her desire to see more outdoor dining uh, and uh, and still not have to take up too much of the roadway. Uh, but question, Mr. Halak Yodis, on just and Mr. Mizuko. The regulation, the three page regulations that we're looking at here pertain to the town, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But the diagrams pertain to several specific places because you want the town to get involved specifically in those locations. Right? So he's got to submit a plan for, for the folks with Lewis's and uh, and uh, to Beirut. However, the plan has already been done for them. Is that, is that correct?
No, that's just an example of what we think it would look like. Um, our sort of a recommendation of here's how it could work. The reason we'd be creating the temporary sidewalks is to allow to use the sidewalk space and allow people to still walk past maintaining some sort of social distancing as well as maintaining uh, distance for a wheelchair. The, every restaurant would have to come up with their own plan. Now, let's say a small breakfast place downtown said, well, my plan is to use fifty-seven parking spaces along Washington Street. And it's all going to be for my one restaurant. Well, of course you wouldn't do that. Most spaces, restaurants would get a couple of spaces in front of their uh, their establishment. These are public areas, we need to step in where it's a public area. You may have something, I think Paul mentioned the Chateau earlier or Jake and Joe's where they present us a map that here's their building. Here's their parking lot and they want to make this space over here their lot. And once public safety has reviewed it, we would determine that this makes sense or it doesn't make sense. Cause again, we want to make sure it goes through that public safety review. So it's not that I'm just going to look at and say, this looks great. I can picture myself having dinner right there. Let's go with it. It's going to go through the building inspector, planning, engineering and public safety. I'm going to say, yes, this is acceptable to the traffic concerns over uh, where somebody's delivering. You know, that's a case, again, we're not requiring restaurants to do this. We're saying if you apply to us, we can make this happen if you want to. Would Lewis's say block off my delivery area and make their own deliveries a problem? I don't think so. Just as we're going to have to look at some restaurants may say, you know, we, we only want this from five to ten P M. Um, and maybe that works for them and other restaurants may want it during the day. You may have a swap off there. If you have two restaurants that maybe agree or don't agree, we're not going to completely disadvantage one. We would sit down with the tenants or sit down with the two businesses and say, here's what we think we can do. Here's what we think we couldn't.
Pardon the interruption though, but, but if restaurant says I'm only interested in, let's say from five to ten, but the jersey barriers are there permanently, at least until we remove them. Isn't that correct?
That may be the case. It depends on what they're looking to do. Again, we want to maintain
Basically, you've reconfigured a street and the sidewalk for five hours a night of dining service in that case.
If it saves a restaurant, it's worth it. I mean, what we're just trying to do is give
Yeah, it might be, but I just want to make sure I didn't say what you're proposing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think Mr. Howard had a question next.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, on Lewis's, I'm almost positive that Lewis's has uh, dining on their roof. I don't think they'd even want the sidewalk. They, they have it on their premises that they've been using, I think each summer. But having said that, uh, I, I think in a nutshell here, it's not a question of should we do this? We have to do it in some fashion. We have to do it. So as my colleague, Mr. Maloney said, let's keep it simple. Keep it simple, you know? Minimum, minimum cost. Get it done so that we can help these people. They, they've, they've been in tough straits here for the last two to three months, very tough straits. We have to help them. I mean, you know, there are people, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. And before I get to anybody else, uh, there is no dining on the roof. But I will stipulate that this evening on the new business number four, Giuseppe Topiano, the General Manager's Lewis's, has asked for a
You shut yourself off.
Yeah, your mic's off, Paul.
My
It was such a good speech too, it was really on a roll. Uh, relative to rooftop dining, there is no rooftop dining and I can assure you of that. But under Article four of our first page of our agenda, Giuseppe Topiano, the General Manager of Lewis's Restaurant and Grill has asked for a public hearing, which we voted on to, uh, he wants to put outdoor dining in that alleyway adjacent to their building. And there is architectural designs here at the office. If anybody wants to come in and take a look at them. But in two weeks' time or later, we'll be looking, uh, probably not me, uh, you, Mr. Howard. But they'll be looking at approving that request for outside dining. And with that said, uh, they have outside dining and I mentioned another, they want outside dining. Another owner just stipulated that he just wants a couple of small tables so people can eat the takeout. Let me ask this of Mr. Halak Yodis. Uh, we had a survey that was done and only nineteen people responded to it. But have we gone one-on-one with these business owners and asked them exactly what they want?
Well, that survey that was sent out, um, there was support uh, for allowing the out, for the i, outdoor dining and allowing the setup like a pickup station where someone could pull up in a spot to, to dump out and, and grab a meal to pick up. Um, so the, as I mentioned earlier, this is going to be lead on a case by case basis. In some cases, it may not work. In other cases, um, engineering and, and building uh, D P W might advise them to uh, to make some adjustments to their plans. So it will all work, but this is not a, a, a permanent solution. It's, it's temporary. And honestly, folks, they do alfresco dining all over the world and they don't have these kind of discussions to allow it. So I, I really think we need to be practical here and, and just kind of move on. Be glad to, to meet with Bill and, and address any concerns that he has.
Mr. Mr. Halak Yodis, uh, it, it might be wise for you not to uh, uh, not to belittle the efforts of the selectmen to uh, to uh, discuss a proposal that's been brought forward and we're discussing it for the first time. It's of, it, it's of no consequence to us that they do alfresco dining elsewhere. We're talking about here, we're talking about a temporary measure in response to a, uh, to an emergency. So we'll come to a pretty good solution on that, I promise you that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Maloney, I like your terminology. It's a very tempered response too, and we'll find the appropriate response. Mr. Hajar, before I get to you, Mr. Plasko, you had a question, I believe?
Well, you can go to Mr. Hajar for us. I, I just want to wrap up.
Mr. Hajar?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I, I, I think Bill brought up some good points about the, the brick. So I, I too am concerned. Um, I, I think it's a good idea if we could try to avoid using it and just keep them on the sidewalks, which are pretty wide. So if you're going to create the secondary sidewalk using the jersey barriers, I, I see no reason why they couldn't just use the, the concrete sidewalk um, just for any outdoor dining or, or seating. Um, but again, you know, in some places the brick is really kind of slow, pretty hard. In some areas, it's, it's pretty flat. So I, I, I think a case by case review uh, will determine that. And I think we just have, have to be careful about it. Um, you know, the place in our route one, they have the advantage, obviously they got the big parking lots. They can put up a tent and tables and chairs. And I, I don't think any of us are disagreeing with, with, with those type of ideas. But um, do need to be careful about the sidewalks themselves with the use of the brick. Um, on the in, insurance, um, Tony, um, I, I know you're, you're asking for two million dollars for injury or death. And you're asking that the town be uh, named as additional insured. But then we also say, um, if they can't get it for that much, we'll take what they can get as long as we know that that's a high limit that's available. So, um, um, has town council
Yeah, we're covered under our general liability. It's no different than somebody using a town park. And if you think about it, somebody sits on their town, on a bench in the town park and happens to injure themselves. We're covered both under our sovereign immunity and our general liability as well. We just always ask for additional insurance because we enjoy additional insurance and it just helps uh, defray any litigation costs that may come or any other bad faith claims uh, that may come. So we always ask for it, but we're covered under our general liability.
And if I could just interject, I believe it's also required when we normally do the outside dining, whether it be a couple of tables in front of perks or somewhere else. Uh, Mr. Halak Yodis, you had something else?
Regarding the insurance, um, there were no changes made to the existing um, policy. So I, I wasn't going to touch that. I assume that town council either reviewed or wrote that originally. And uh, town council did, did review these regulations and um, gave a little input into them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Mizuko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this isn't a perfect plan. If we were to say we're going to do outdoor dining in downtown for the next ten years, is this how we would do it? No. The addition of the jersey barriers was really to allow some maintaining of social distancing and to allow ADA accessibility. Uh, I agree with Mr. Maloney to the point where you're right, just fill up the sidewalk with the uh, with the dining. We wanted to provide the opportunity for the additional uh, walk space to maintain social distancing and to allow for an ADA compliance. So it's not perfect, but we're looking at what we can do in an imperfect situation, an imperfect world to try to offer a helping hand to some of our restaurants downtown. We may see fifty, and, and again, it applies everywhere. We think in downtown, we can talk about Central Street, which will particularly help out some of these uh, a lot of the restaurants. Uh, you know, we may get fifty percent of folks, places trying it. We may get twenty-five percent. We may get four places do. Uh, if it helps one restaurant out, we're looking to try to do it. Again, it's a strange world that we're living in. Uh, we'd all love more outdoor dining. When we don't have to worry about things like social distancing, this probably becomes a little bit easier. And then we do, you know, the market has to determine what's available. If I'm a pizza shop and I say, well, I don't want any parking out front and I want all outdoor seating and it causes my business to go down, they're going to very quickly say, please take this away. This didn't work for us. Or if they have to invest twenty thousand dollars in additional seats or tables, they may not want to do it. Uh, just as a business uh, like Lewis's may say, you know what? We can't have this blocked off over here because we have to have a truck come in. So the market's going to have to determine that. To the specific point, uh, one last point about, you know, the brick and whether a table could bridge that gap or not. Part of that is a business decision among the business. If they feel comfortable offering their customers something that's comfortable and safe that they're going to enjoy. I don't think any of our business owners are going to just uh, are going to want to harm their own business. So anything they put out there, the space they have, they're going to want to make sure it works for them. We have a lot of great restaurants downtown and I think if they maintain their level of quality, which I think they will. You're not going to see any restaurant owner that's going to want to just take that much of a risk and do something that he's going to think is, he or she is going to think their customers are not going to enjoy or not going to feel um, comfortable with. On a case by case basis, we could, if somebody said they just want to put three tables out, maybe there's no need to block off the uh, uh, the parking spaces. That person says they want to put out eight spaces, we may need to say, okay, we really need to do something here. You may see a small takeout place that says, hey, if I can put two tables out there, I'm, I'm happy as a pig in slop and, and it's going to help me get a few people out there. You may have that more full service restaurant that says, look, for this to work for me to put a waitress out there, a waiter out there. I gotta have six or eight and that the sidewalk's going to get full and to maintain the physical distancing, we may want to do it. So it's, it would be on a case by case basis. Again, in a perfect world, we'd spend another month working on this and then we would spend several weeks reviewing every application. We are looking to cut the tape and try to get something out quick and it may not be the A product we'd like to get out. But we may have to settle for a uh, a B product because we want to just get some help out there for a situation that's otherwise difficult to find.
We get it. Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, just one thing, Mr. Mizuko, we think, I know that in Mr. Yodis's survey, twelve out of the nineteen respondents answered yes to the question, would your restaurant require assistance in obtaining essential materials for outdoor seating? I assume that means that we're contemplating providing those chairs, tables, so forth. I think you just said that. Thinking, I mean, is, is it something we have, is something we can probably lease rather than buy or obtain on the cheap? Uh, how are you planning to attack?
We, we have some minimal funds available for downtown amenities that we want to really focus on our Central Street project. Uh, mainly we will be looking at the jersey barriers. The other items may be, we'd have to sit there and see what they need assistance with and what we can reasonably provide help with. I, you know, tables are probably going to be pretty limited because I don't know if we could rent tables and, and how many we could do in that order. But it would be asking them, what is it that you need from us that we might be able to help with? And it could be as simple as, hey, look, they can take care of their, their restaurant area. They're not going to have jersey barriers. Maybe we have directional signage. Um, that may be the case. We may need to place additional barrels there or allow them to place barrels out and agree that we, we are going to be able to handle the trash somehow. So we're willing to work with them and do whatever we reasonably can. We don't have a pot of a million dollars to, you know, buy them high tops and buy other things like that, nor could we legitimately do that, but.
Uh, before I turn it over to Mr. Plasko, I just want to make one quick statement if I can. Um, I like to use analogies to uh, compare things, but I think we're building a cruise ship here. When all we're really looking for, the majority of the board is looking for a rowboat to uh, to solve the problem. Uh, I think that might simplify it, but Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. Um, I just made my points about the brick areas and seating and so forth to indicate that I don't think in this case uh, all around the world, they do this. And we may have some locations that it can work nicely for. But in most of the downtown area, as, as shown and promoted here, I don't think works. I agree with Mr. Mizuko that if it doesn't work, they're not going to put tables there. They don't put tables there, they're going to, they're going to put them on the sidewalk, which as Mr. Maloney said, let them do that. We let them do that now. We already have a plan and a policy of having outdoor dining. And so the question is, can we reasonably allow that to be expanded? And I don't think this does it in a reasonable manner. Uh, I'm not against the concept, not against finding a way to do it. I just see a lot of
I'm not against the concept, not against finding a way to do it. I just see a lot of problems with particular things that are indicated to us here in this package. As I said, we already allow outdoor dining. And I would be 100% opposed to the town paying for tables and chairs for private business. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, it's it's something that we have to get done, but how much do we have to get done and how are we going to get it done, I think comes down to. So, Mr. Hajar, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, with that said. Okay, thank you. I think we have to go back to the drawing board a little bit. And I would like to make a motion to ask Mr. Plasko to get together with Mr. Halakiotis and Mr. Mizuko to see if we can come up with some alternative solution. Mr. Plasko talked about this is something we already do. But maybe we can find little nuances there to change things, make them a little better. Like I said, in the case of the Lewis's, it shows depiction of outside dining. And the reality is they're going to come before us in several weeks to look to put their own outside dining on their side of their property. And somebody else who I'd rather not mention said, I really don't need tables. I had this discussion yesterday. I don't need tables. All I need is a couple of small ones to have people eat takeout in front of my business. So would that be a minimal to the three parties, Mr. Halakiotis, Mr. Mizuko, and Mr. Plasko to get together and come up with a plan? Mr. Maloney?
Two things, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'll make that motion for you and then if you want, we could contemplate perhaps another, don't emergency, but another unplanned or unscheduled meeting. You know, in order, time being of the essence, to to whatever they whatever the three of them come up with. And I think I think Sagal Reese had her hand up a minute ago, and I don't know if she still wanted to talk, but you were looking away, Mr. Chairman. Just want to make you aware of that. Thank you so much. I made my motion.
Mr. Sagal, I never look away. And before I go to Sagal Reese, I just want to say that's a minimal to everybody. I have a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Yes.
Just to put the three parties together. And we will have a meeting. There's no meeting scheduled for next week. But we'll have it later this week. We'll have it next week, whenever the three parties come together with some kind of an idea that we can move forward. Because time is of the essence. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. I'd like to turn it over now to Sagal Reese, if I could, for any comments she may make.
Yeah, I just want to add, when we were talking about the timeline, that this might be as early as a phase two, that restaurants will start to be having some sort of seating. We don't know the restrictions on that yet. But that, you know, I think the point was made that, you know, we want to get this sooner rather than later, so they can start planning for it and we can start approving it. Because we want to move it as quick as possible, but as my office is pretty busy at this point. So the earlier I get them to look at them, the better.
And we will try to accommodate that as much as possible, whether it be sometime this week or next week, as soon as Mr. Mizuko, Mr. Halakiotis, and Mr. Plasko feel there's something to bring to the table. Any other questions on the topic? Okay, with that said, that brings us up to unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to discuss, sorry, did you want to discuss Central Street?
Oh, I'm sorry, Central Street.
We have the framework. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, we have the framework for built and will be bringing to the board soon. And I believe actually Mr. Halakiotis and Mr. Plasko and I can probably get together tomorrow and have something with the board very soon. Separately, we'll be bringing the board a proposal for Central Street. We had been working tentatively with either this summer or next summer in mind of doing some outdoor sort of placemaking space by closing off Central Street weekends in the summer. We'd have some outdoor amenities there. We know we should finally, within a few weeks, have our sound system up and running downtown that we've been working on the last couple of years. The idea in brief is that we would close off Central Street to traffic on weekends. We would have some cafe tables, perhaps amenities, and would just be an outdoor sort of gathering space. We haven't fully formed that idea yet. However, given everything that's happening, we want to sort of speed that up and for this summer, allow outdoor dining down there. It would be, this would be us providing the amenities, if you will, so there'd be tables, chairs. This would be an outdoor gathering space. It would be able to serve any restaurant. There's no table service per se, but if you could go to the coffee shop or the bagel place or the ice cream place or to Beirut, get takeout. Downtown dining area. We feel it would be a great element of placemaking. Goes along with some of the adjustments and investments we're making downtown as well as it would give some additional outdoor capacity to restaurants that either maybe didn't want to or couldn't have the sidewalk seating as well as just some of the smaller places where you may just be getting a cup of coffee. So we'll be bringing a more formal proposal to the board sooner rather than later, probably along with the outdoor dining and a few other economic development initiatives. We have to try to give a kickstart to some businesses in town. Just want to know if the board had any initial questions or thoughts or concerns.
Questions from the board? Mr. Hajar?
Tony, I support this idea. I think it would bring in just having people, I'm sorry, just having people, more people, the ability, allowing more people the ability to use downtown, walk, take advantage of additional food places, not worried about the traffic on that busy street with restaurants in that area. I think in the long run, it's a it's a good option. I do think you see a lot of places or cities and towns that actually close off streets and brick them up and just have, you know, it be a pedestrian way. So I think just taking this initial step to see how successful it is, see if it's welcomed by the community as a whole, and then we can move forward on whether it should be a permanent thing and do something or whether it doesn't. But you have to try different things. I think this is another one way of developing and enhancing the downtown experience.
Thank you, Mr. Hajar. Mr. Before I go to Mr. Maloney, Mr. Plasko, did you have something to add?
No, sir.
I just get used to seeing your hand up there. I'm not losing focus here.
Waving around here.
Lailing, lailing is the word. Mr. Maloney, sir, you had a question?
Yeah, I just, I know I've talked to Mr. Mizuko about this extensively. I'm not really in favor of of blocking off that part of Central Street permanently. But I think for what for what we're facing this coming summer, this might be a good idea. You know, we'll take, we're thinking like, I know you just said it, Tony, I'm sorry, Friday through Sunday, what would?
Yeah, so sort of a proof of concept. We'll we'll block it off Friday through Sunday. We'll we'll put some turf down. We'll have some tables out there and some benches and barrels. We'd originally planned on some other amenities, but now we're sort of focusing on a safe outdoor space for folks to eat. And we'll run it weekends, maybe starting in late June. We got to get a formal plan together. We got to figure out when we can do it. And similar to the outdoor dining downtown, it's kind of a proof of concept. We think it'll help. We think it'll be great. It'll either be packed every weekend or there'll be nobody there and we'll say, well, gee, we tried that for six weeks and there were five people there all day long and we just don't do it again. And there's no there's no real harm in giving it a shot. It's it would be, we can't get a set date because we got to make sure we have the amenities. We have everything ready to go. Again, we do have some funds available for downtown outdoor amenities, not an unlimited amount of money. So we've got to make sure we can get things in as well. We'll plan it for when we can reasonably, we'll bring a more formal proposal to the board, but we'll give it a shot. If it's successful, great. It's helpful. It'll work. If it doesn't work, it's not like we've permanently closed off a street or completely ruined a street or anything like that. It's
An extraordinary time. I think it's it's an imaginative idea under the circumstances. I'm looking forward to seeing the proposal.
Thank you. And if I could just add too, I had talked to Mr. Mizuko about this and I think I talked to my colleague, Mr. Maloney about this, but if for some reason this venture fails, we have a secondary situation where we could do the same thing, but maybe reach out to the food truck consortium and maybe get five trucks or so, whatever, would line up on one side of Central Street, and maybe that would attract more people also to the downtown area. And again, they could sit on Central Street and enjoy their meal there if they choose to do that. Is that it? Mr. Maloney?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Conrad.
Conrad Agnawa.
Chancellor, West Germany. We're starting to lose control here. All right, if there's no other questions, I'd like to move on to unfinished business. That would be a letter coming from the ABCC, the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, submitting final approval for the change of license category from wine and malt beverage to all alcoholic beverage license and change of hours for the LLC ventures doing business as Little Bird Events on 83 Moore Street, Building Number Four, Unit F. That's information to file?
Yes.
Second.
Motion of a second to file? Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
And the board votes aye, so that will be filed as memorandum. Number two, under unfinished business, fiscal year 2021 budget for approval of the board. Anybody have any questions on that? Mr. Hajar?
Yes. So, Mr. Chairman, the the board was gracious enough to allow me to sit down with Tony to talk about my concern regarding the Conservation Commission. So you know, like I said to Tony during our long conversation, this is going to be one of those issues where as much as we agree in 95% of them, this isn't going to be one of them. I have a couple of comments on the budget. Overall, I'm for the budget, although I do think the Finance Commission has taken a second look at it. When it comes to, if we could just talk about training for for a second, I am I asked this question during the budget when we had questions and responses back from the general manager. It was fine. I am not opposed to training, conferences, whatever you want to call it. I support it. I think it's good for morale. Think it's good for people's experience to be exposed to how others do it, and if we can learn from it, bring it back and move on with it. All I'm asking for is at least for the 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 board to be notified in advance when I don't know what that number should be, but more than several members are going to attend the same conference at the same time. To me, it doesn't matter where it is. It's just the fact that we should be made aware of. And at least the chairman of the board should be made aware of when there are going to be a good number of employees attending the same conference, and we should just be made aware of. Two is I'm still not fully satisfied with the outcome of what's going on with the Conservation Commission and everything. And I know there's been a lot of discussion individually. I myself had a very good conversation with with Tony, so and I understand the rationale. I would ask the board to schedule a meeting in the near future so that we can talk about organization. I don't think we're trying to step in anybody's toes with regards to who has what authority to do it. But I, for one, would like to know what the plans are short term and long term, so we can all be on the same page and not just hear about during the budget process. I want to know about it in advance and give my input. It may not be accepted, and that's okay too. But I also want to hear my colleagues' input. They may change my mind or they may bring up issues that I hadn't thought of, and it's important. So I know we're on, we seem to be on a fast pace lots of times with with headcounts and where people are going. And we hear about it piece by piece. I really seriously would like to ask the chair to to put it on, or at least the board approve that we put on an upcoming meeting not too distant in the future and have an overall open discussion about organizational structure and how we are trying to look what we want to look like in the next few years. That's going to lead. I think that's part of our role is to provide the input to the general manager to make sure that they were on the same page and that we're not going into a direction that we didn't want to go in.
Anybody have objections to putting that on a future agenda sometime in June? Mr. Maloney?
I don't object, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a good idea on both of Mr. Hajar's points. I'm I'm in agreement with him. You know what, too? Mr. Mizuko, here's the thing to think about. When we do this, you know, when we go abroad for training, it's a great teachable moment for the Board of Selectmen too, before you leave and when you come back and maybe bring in some of the people with you that can tell us what they learned too. You know, I mean, you had a great trip to Tennessee, you know, within the last 12 months, I think it was, and it, you know, worked out well. I wouldn't be opposed to hearing them come in and tell us what they paid for these folks to go on trips. I'm happy to do it. I want to hear what they learned. So I think probably, you know, if we integrate that kind of conversation into into the training and make it a dialogue, I think it, I think it'd be better for everybody. I'm with David. I'm in favor of appropriating the money that you need for this kind of thing. So so we'll just, it'll just help us get to understand, you know, the return of the investment for us. And as for the organizational thing with David, I think that's a good idea. A roundtable discussion with you and anybody else you want to bring in, Mr. Mizuko, to talk about what plans you might have for land use boards, for example, headcounts needed in other places, what type of people you want to bring in to perform certain tasks that maybe we've been kind of slacking over the last few years. I mean, you've had two and a half years now. You probably have a good idea what you'd like to do. So I think I'd love to hear it too. I think I think it's a great idea to have that meeting. I really do. It'd be mutually beneficial. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Hajar, is that something you wanted to do with the Board of Selectmen, or did you want to see a group of people get together and discuss this?
Well, I want us as a board to talk, but I'm happy to hear from Tony and obviously Tony and whomever he feels is necessary to to talk about the direction he'd like to go in with regards to how we're going to line up different departments and staff them.
All right, to be fair to the incoming members very shortly, actually, two weeks from tonight is our last official meeting, Mr. Howard, myself. Is this something you can wait till you have a new board, so you'll have five members, two of which 40% of the board were brand new? Or would you rather do this before we leave?
Well, I think it could be a pretty in-depth conversation depending on how involved or how many departments we're talking about. So in fairness to you, Mr. Chairman, and to Mr. Howard, wouldn't want to necessarily bore you with something that you're, you are going to say, I have no control over what's going to be going on here. So it's okay that we we wait. I would just want to make sure that it is scheduled, that it just isn't something that we put out there and then it's forgotten. Forgotten about. I really want to make sure it's on an agenda. It can wait till after the election, absolutely.
Thank you for that. So I'll leave that up to my other board members, excluding myself and Mr. Howard to set that up. Mr. Plasko, you had a question, sir?
Thank you. I agree that it's a good thing for us to sit down and review these things in the manner that Mr. Hajar brought up. But I also want to point out that the manager did over time, mentioned his ideas and things he'd like to do. It's a part of when we started the management review and he put out his goals and his objectives. Those were mentioned. I think we as a board failed to follow that through with that process and to just have further discussions about what our goals were and what we agreed or disagreed with. But that's what Mr. Hajar is now suggesting we should be doing. So I absolutely support that. I also think that the reference here was about approving the budget. And while Mr. Hajar has mentioned that we can't agree with 100% of the budget necessarily, the pros and the cons and balance, are we in support of the budget or not? And I have been in support of this budget to this point. I just want to ask Mr. Mizuko if he's debating making changes or should we take action this evening?
So the only, thank you, Mr. Plasko, the only changes we may be making is to where we're getting projected revenues from. I know the FinCom wanted to see some different models for changing the revenue picture. I can tell you, in the midst of a pandemic, in the midst of a crisis, reducing, government's not going to cost less to operate next year. It's going to cost more. Everything we do is going to cost us more to operate next year. In the school department, that's going to be the same, and that's not our normal cost increase. So the idea that we would go back and cut the budget and cut out public safety, cut public health, cut our other services in going into a year where we're still going to be dealing with a pandemic is irresponsible and dangerous. If our revenue numbers aren't where we think they're going to be, we have a lot of options for making adjustments to those revenue items, but the actual budget as it is, I believe, is set to go. Other than where the those revenue sources, which we'll be preparing something for the FinCom that we can share with the board as soon as we have it for some changes on the revenue projection side in an effort to be more cautious if folks think that's necessary.
Mr. Plasko, you had something?
I was just going to say that I've heard that explanation given to the townwide budget committee, the Finance Commission, and so forth. I agree with it. I don't think now's the time to make the cuts. We do have enough revenue sources. the time to make the cuts, we do have enough, uh, revenue sources to fill the gap if we have to, although we can probably expect a gap, we have to deal with that, but the main budget, my belief is that it's a relatively solid budget, and I support it. So, uh, you know, we made a motion as Light Commissioners, support the Light Commission budget, we have to go forward with the FinCom and town meeting, and whether they agree with us or not, we have to have a position. So I guess I'd like to make a motion that we support the fiscal two thousand twenty-one budget as submitted and recommended by the general manager.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Uh, so I have a motion and a second to accept, uh, the twenty twenty-one budget as submitted to the Board of Selectmen, and we've had comments from Mr. Mazuko, as well as Mr. Hajar. So with that said, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the board votes aye, so that'll be five to nothing in favor. That brings us up to memorandum, uh, Russ McGuire, Nod Airport Manager, submitting a conditional approval regarding bow hunting on town-owned property at the airport. I hope everybody had an opportunity to read that. This is something we've done in the past, the deer population becomes somewhat of a problem, planes taking off and landing at Nod Airport, so what they do for a short period of time is allow a minimal amount of people with pre-approved to go onto the property and eliminate some of the deer population. Questions from the board? This also has the approval of the Chief of Police.
Motion approved? Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous, that's five.
Muted.
Try and mute again, Paul.
Keep putting paperwork in top of the button here.
That's-
That brings us up to the next item, which is item two, Billy Inspector's monthly report, Mr. Matthew Walsh submitting re- report for April of twenty twenty, motion to accept as information?
So moved.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, unanimous, uh, Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Plasko?
Aye.
And the chairman votes aye, so that's again passed.
I say aye too, Mr. Chairman.
Say that again?
I say aye too.
You say aye too, well, I, I thought I heard you. Thank you for that, Mr. Howard. That brings us up to night, number item three, a memorandum. With Chief William G. Brooks III, Nod Police Department submitting a monthly report on the department's activities. Uh, information?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept his monthly report as information, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Close, unanimous, Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
And the board votes aye. Our second article put in here by the Chief of Police, a recommendation, dispatcher Joseph Montesano. Uh, and if I could read this and you could tolerate me for a moment, Sergeant Payne has brought to my attention the utmost professionalism in work that you displayed, you being Mr. Montesano, on Sunday, Missi- Monday, May third, twenty twenty, while working a shift in the four-to-twelve dispatcher, uh, you assisted on two medical calls, and I won't get into the whole, uh, letter, but it, the letter says, I'd like to recognize your exemplary performance that you displayed while under a great amount of job pressure. With that said, so many times we do things for police officers and firefighters, it's not that often that we recognize, uh, dispatchers, so I'd like to thank Mr. Montesano personally, and, uh, you accept that as information, gentlemen?
Mr. Jack?
Mr. Howard?
I, I make a motion, we, uh, include that, uh, send a letter to Joe?
Do I have a second on that from someone?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to send a letter of recognition from this board to Mr. Joseph Montesano, dispatcher, Nod Police Department, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, unanimous, Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
Smiling, Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
And the board votes aye, so that pretty much concludes everything, except the manager's update, and I got your email, Mr., uh, Mr. Manager, so if you'd like to mention it now, feel free, if not, I will mention it, but-
Uh, just a couple of quick updates, and then I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as everyone knows, the governor did release his, uh, reopening plan, will be, the Board of Health will take the lead in making decisions as businesses open up and what their compliance is, we're going to be reviewing, uh, when we think things will be opening and making decisions. We may not open different facilities on the municipal side, I should say. Um, exactly according to the plan, we have to make sure that we're ready, that our staff is ready, that our facilities are ready, there may be some buildings that take a little bit longer than others to get ready, so our goal is to be safe, we'll be keeping you updated as we go through that process. We think at this point we'll be able to run camps and possibly pools over the summer, however, that's assuming we progress to fi- phase two and phase three on schedule, so we think we can do it, we will have to wait and see. In addition to the downtown project, we'll be bringing one or two other small sort of economic development initiatives to the board in the next week or two that we would like to, uh, have you take a look at. Uh, we were able to get the sign-up on Washington Street, that says we heart the class of twenty twenty, so I don't know if you've had a chance to see that in the last day or two, that is up there, uh, we're happy that that's up there, so kudos to the DPW for ordering that and getting it ready, and of course, to the Light Department for it getting up there. Uh, we do continue on many of our various food security and other resident, uh, need programs, the need is still there, we're hoping as the economy starts to open up, we may be able to wrap some of these programs up, uh, come June or July, depending on how things end up going. The Citizen Call Center is still open, we're actually looking at ways that the Citizen Call Center may, uh, survive the pandemic, and we may look at a model where we're still using that as sort of a, a three-one-one center done, uh, remotely. And I believe that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That would bring us up our personal agendas, if there is any, Mr. Maloney?
Just a couple of things, uh, Mr. Chairman, one is, I wanna thank Mr. Mazuko for two memos that he sent out earlier in the week, updates on different things, some of which you just covered. Uh, we kept government running, we kept people safe, we kept educating children, we kept the lights on, and we have fed and taken care of thousands of our residents, all in less than ninety days, and now that there is a plan for reopening coming, we're catching our breath and are ready for more, we haven't come this far, only to come this far, so, uh, that's a summing up of one of the memos from Mr. Mazuko, good work, appreciate you keeping us up to date on that, and some of the other more mundane quotidian things that we do in this town too, outside of pandemics. Uh, regarding, regarding the current situation, I see that in phase one, among those institutions that will be allowed to open our houses of worship, uh, I'm very happy to see that myself, and, uh, I do look forward to seeing many of my co-communicants at St. Cafferns this weekend, uh, and, um, I know what people from different, uh, houses of worship feel the same way about, uh, about the situation, so, uh, looking forward to this, it's taking, it's taking a long time for this reopening, the government's laid it, the governor's laid it off for over twelve weeks or so, but there it is, we'll do the best we can. Thank you, everybody, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Mazuko, thank you, all my colleagues.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hajar?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I also want to, uh, thank the town employees for the, the great work that they've done. Um, we have great leaders, uh, Tony, Dave Thompson, some great department heads, all doing some wonderful work, but it also takes the, uh, the, the, you know, the boots on the ground, so to speak, uh, and that is the actual, uh, employees, like, you know, police, fire, health department, et cetera, DPW, doing everything that they can to, uh, get us through this, this crisis. And I'll say, as we start to go into the different phases of Tony coming out of this, um, everyone stay safe, keep a distance, and we'll be able to come out of it sooner, um, so it, this is a good thing. Um, second, I just wanna remind everybody to, uh, to vote, I know it's coming up sooner than you think, it's right around the corner, June eighth. Um, for many of you that don't want to, uh, wait in line, or concerns about getting too close to so many individuals, I know Tony has outlined that, you know, there's going to be, uh, distances and plexiglass and all the rest for people to utilize, but if you don't wanna wait in line, or you're concerned that if the weather's bad and I have to wait outside because there's too many people in line, use your absentee ballot, just go online and ask for an application from the clerk's office, or download the form yourself, send it in, and they'll mail you out a ballot. It's pretty simple, um, and they do a great job of sending it out in a very timely fashion, send it back in, you have your vote, uh, and, and no big issue this way, you don't have to worry about it. Um, last, I want, wish everybody a great Memorial Day, uh, weekend, um, hopefully you, uh, can do something different than you've been able to do for the past twelve weeks, um, but, uh, just enjoy and stay safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, and if I could just touch upon one thing, uh, the town election is June eighth, so if they do an absentee ballot, it would have to be received here in the town hall by the end of the Business Day on the prior Friday, which would be June fifth. So if you do vote, and you're gonna do it by mail, do it as quickly as you can, please. Mr. Howard, you have something this evening?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Uh, I too would like to thank, uh, Mr. Mazuko and the Public Works for that, uh, very nice sign to the class of twenty twenty, it's well-deserved by the students, and it looks real nice, I thank you for that. I, I, I would also, uh, like to tell a brief story that today I had the occasion to, to, uh, uh, make a phone call on a house appliance, talked to a lady, I haven't asked her where she's from, she says Ohio. She comes back to me and says, how are you folks doing on, on the emergency in Massachusetts? And I told her about it, I said likewise, how are you doing in Ohio? She said, the state pretty much last week opened wide open again. She said in her town, twelve out of thirteen businesses, uh, have been reclosed again because they all had a whole bunch of people come down with the virus. She said, it appears in her state that they opened way too soon, opening everything, and it's like a forest fire there, were her words. So, just a word to the wise, I've been so proud of our town employees, I, I have been going to the grocery store, which I never usually do, to help my wife, a- and seeing people with their masks hustling around to do what they have to do, it's, it's very nice, it's very nice seeing what our people do. I think the greatest majority are doing what they're supposed to do, and well done, folks, well done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Plasko?
Thank you, um, a lot of you stole my thunder, so ditto to, uh, Mr. Hajar's two comments, and ditto to yours on the absentee ballot, you know, it's, uh, needs to be emphasized, it's not too late to think about an absentee ballot, but it's getting late, so don't, don't delay, 'cause there is a little bit of time involved in that process to have it sent out and then returned, you wanna make sure it's returned on time. Mr. Chairman, were, um, did we intend to add to our agenda, uh, an announcement on the general manager's contract?
That is in my comments closing this evening on my agenda, and I apologize to the board because we failed to put it on this evening's agenda, it was on at one point in time, but through some, for some reason, it did not get in the final copy, but that will be addressed this evening before we leave, I'll be asking for ratification, uh, and so on.
And I'm done, thank you kindly.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that brings it up to me, so let me continue on, uh, several of my board members have given positive comments this evening to the general manager, and while the iron is still hot, see if we can get something out of this. Uh, we have met on a couple of occasions, the Board of Selectmen, to go over the general manager's contract, and we have come to terms on a contract going forward, and the first thing I wanna do is take a vote, uh, by the Board of Selectmen to include it on this evening's agenda, so there's no question about it. Can I get a vote? I have a vo- uh-
So moved.
I have a vote in a second, motion in a second, all, any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, unanimous, and secondly, I would like to take a general vote poll of the board members to ratify the contract that we have come to terms with. With that said, uh, Mr. Maloney?
Happy to vote yes.
Mr. Hajar?
Also happy to vote yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Likewise, happy to vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, just give me a minute to think about it. I, I also will vote in the affirmative, so that's five in the affirmative, uh, to ratify and approve Mr. Mazuko's contract going forward. With that said, a few more quick things here, people keep passing me notes during the TV show. The Nod Scholarship Foundation normally gives out, uh, scholarships, and they have an award program at the Elks, I believe, which will not be held this year because of the obvious reasons, but according to Mr. George Jusovich, the president, and Mr. Timothy McDonough, the vice president of the Nod Scholarship Foundation, there will be a televised, uh, scholarship winners announced tomorrow evening at seven PM on Nod Community Media. Tomorrow night, seven PM, the winners of the Nod Scholarship Foundation, uh, winners will be announced, so that's that. Uh, on Monday, this coming Monday, as we all know, is Memorial Day, the twenty-fifth. Uh, normally, we would have a parade, and we would have a, uh, a very honored, traditionally we do is, uh, say words at the cemetery by various individuals. That has been videotaped virtually, and it will be shown, um, at ten AM Monday morning on Nod Community Media, and Mr. Maloney stopped smiling at me. Uh, it took place at the Highland Cemetery, and I still have the scars from my sunburn last week, but that will be broadcast, the, uh, the program will be broadcast Monday, uh, ten AM, Nod Community Media. Next, on my agenda, Betty Masandrea, uh, former member of the Nod Council on Aging, she's been a friend, uh, at the Nod Center for many years, she represented her district at town meeting for many years, her and her husband, Tony. Betty is turning ninety, nine zero years old on Friday, and I just, on behalf of the board, would like to thank her for her community service to the town, and we all wish her a very happy and healthy ninetieth birthday going forward. Uh, and Mr. Mazuko, I'd like to ask you, if you could, just, I had a complaint today by telephone on Access Road, apparently there was some construction work there, and there was a trench dug, but to quote the caller, it's deplorable, the, uh, the condition of the trench, and I tried to emphasize at one point in time that it was done last, late last fall or in the wintertime, and it usually needs a time to settle before we do a top coat. In either case, can you just, uh, look into that and address it if need be?
Yes, sir, putting the work order in right now.
Thank you, and it may be a problem we're ahead of to settle for a while, I don't know that, but we'll find out. Over the last few weeks and months, we have approved a few things here at the Board of Selectmen, such as cow washes, events on the town common, and events at the Moss House, just to name a few. Uh, all of the, going forward, all the events that have been okayed previously, and obviously be none in the future, will be put on hold for the present, until, for the present time, until such time as we get back in action again, and we get away from this COVID problem. And believe it or not, I actually think I have accomplished everything that I wanted to talk about, I'm amazed. Mr. Plasko?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn tonight's Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Well, that said, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Hajar, you have a smile on your face, I think you should go first.
Aye.
Mr. Plas- Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney? Mr. Howard? Good night, Conrad Adenawa. Uh, Mr. Howard?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so we will amend, and we will conclude our meeting for this evening. Uh, next, uh, meeting is scheduled for two weeks from tonight, but in any event, if something comes up that's pending, that we have to work on very quickly, we will read adjourn, and we'll give the appropriate forty-eight hours notice to the general public. But with that said, uh, we're adjourned. Thank you all for listening.
Good night, all.